We leave out. Needed money to supply extra supports for every student that is behind grade level. We finally got a ton of data from the district, very late, and it takes about an hour to just scratch the surface. Here's a couple of examples in terms of success factors for students. Students that are absent 10 or more days a year. Out of 12 high schools, for 11th graders, 50% of those students are absent 10 or more days a year. That's only through April of this year. The range is 30% to 70%. If you look at, and remember, these are just two out of many measures. If you look at students earning Level 1 or 2 on the Smarter Balance Math Test, just at grade level 11, 68% of all 11th graders in high schools, and for both these statistics, it's averaged across all demographics, are performing at an unsatisfactory level. The range is 27% to greater than 89%. That is why we need aggressive, even risky intervention strategies, and we've left that behind. We've also left behind money for additional support to expand successful elementary and high school programs for at-risk Latino students. And we've also left behind money to expand and support sustainability programs that will save the districts, the district millions of dollars in wasted energy and other resources. So at most, these programs could cost somewhere around $4 million and easily be funded by reallocation of unspent dollars and vacant positions, cuts to administration, administrator travel and training, and more efficient use of contracting dollars. This has obviously been a very controversial topic tonight. We'll be asked in the next few minutes, which I will object to, to approve a $1.2 billion no-bid contract for Miller-Nash to provide legal services that they've provided, as far as I can tell, for decades. For decades, we've used one law firm, and we've never once made it a competitive bid. Here's my suggestion. Take $500,000, hire three new attorneys, and save yourself at least a half a million I'm voting no on the budget for all those reasons, and including what Paul said, that, you know, I can't in good conscience support this. It's really disappointing.
Yeah, I think the budget process this year was that we improved it quite a bit. Actually got quite a bit better. I got some stuff in there that I think really helps children. I agree with Paul, basically. I agree with Mike, basically. But what I think the answer could very possibly be is we need to go back and restructure the entire system. We need to go back and restart with the schools and restructure out. It's just, we, it's been so haphazard over the years that we're in a position where we're not even sure, really, where I spent tons of time trying to make the budget clear. I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it, even if I'd have, and they answered every question I asked, everything. They've got great stuff in them, but I couldn't really make it work. We need to go back and start over. Go into schools and say, we need the, this is our education we're setting up, these are the surrounding helps that we have in the wraparound services. And go from there, and then move out from there, and I think we need to do it during this next school year. And so, in the end, we'll know what kind of education we're getting, because we still have holes that are huge educationally in this school system. We don't have holes. I like the ethnic stu, the ethnic study stuff. I love the library. Thank you to my other board members. I think it really helps a foundational thing. It's the, it's the first, it is, it was the first comprehensive steps in multicultural and cultural relevant history curriculum in Portland Public Schools since 1980, that we're actually taking a comprehensive step. First step, and then there's things we need to do beyond that, of course, but, so there's some things that we really did accomplish, and it was good, and I want to thank Chair Kurler for his reasonableness and his willingness to keep punching away and to treat everybody well. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm looking for something.
Just, I would, it's interesting for me to hear your experience of the budget this year, and for a couple, just things I would contribute. One is that, as a largely new board, we spent between the beginning of your time, all the way until February, coming up with what your seven priorities were and what the metrics were by how we would measure that. And the charge, then, that's given to me is to figure out how we make those priorities actionable. But that, we completed that work in February, and we were in the second year of a biennium. In the first year of this biennium, we did huge investment in, like, really significant school staffing that we'd been absent for years. So, one of our, like, when I said putting together the framework for the budget, largely it was sustaining the investments we made last year. We had very little, and we really worked to find dollars that helped you make the priorities you had just set actionable, and those were the main drivers of this budget. So it was not, and trying to hold stability in the supports we had to schools. So this was not, like, last year was a way more active, how are we investing, and what, but we did system-wide librarians, counselors, teachers, like, we did educational assistants, secretaries, like, really core elements of school staffing that are fundamental value put forward by me. So you could have disagreed, that was not a fundamental value, but that was the fundamental value in a moment when we finally got to hold stability in the system, to get to do that, because we haven't been able to do that for years. So, I don't disagree with many of the things that have been said about how do we want to tackle and go at the budget, and maybe some things that we fundamentally want to do differently. And I think the work that the CBRC did this year was awesome in terms of trying to set policy and some standards that we haven't had, like, what do we do with reserves? How are we driving, how we do staffing? I think Steve has had some really significant suggestions about how he'd like to see staff, and these are all conversations we have, we do have to start right away if we're going to tackle them, because they're conversations that take time and take significant work to do thoughtfully and to really engage people. So just to say, I, given where this board is as a group, I actually feel like, you know, some of the, whatever, it could have been more satisfying. I feel like the staff has worked very hard to be able to provide you with the data that you've been asking for and that you need. If there are places where you feel like you have, actually haven't gotten what you need, I want to hear what that is. And, anyway, so, like, given what we had to work with, I actually feel like we landed in a pretty okay place with you being able to make a mark that was your mark on a budget that didn't have a whole lot in it to work with. So, I think I just want to say that. And I have the context of, you started the budget when you're working on your priorities. That's what's driving our budget, is what you guys say is important, and that's what you hand us as staff to work from in terms of what it is we're trying to make happen. So, I just want that context in your mind. For all the frustration, I just want you to, and again, I want to appreciate CBRC for having done a really different kind of work this year about an understandable budget document, and some guiding principles and priorities, and some policy work around what, how do we think about reserves and long-term health of the organization, because it's a really different frame coming from our community. So, I think some good work's been done this year.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, that's pretty much, thank you, Carol. What I was going to say, particularly, I think the important piece is, Paul mentioned, the small amount that we actually dealt with, and it was a small amount, because we had investments that we have just made, and so, including, I have a list, like, 200 new teaching positions, 80 education assistants, literacy coaches, library and media specialists, counselors, college and career support, more high school teachers, school secretaries, high schools' athletic directors. Those are all investments that we just made last year, and we're just starting to see the benefits of all that. And so, of course, it doesn't leave us with a whole lot in the second part of a biennium. You know, there's a, there's a benefit to being in the second half of the biennium, because you know how much money you have. Now, next year, we won't know how much money we have, and so, who knows? I also think that we're, there were things in this budget that were very important, the literacy funding, and I like the framework that the Teaching and Learning Group is going to look at. I think that's great. Money for enrollment balancing, it's nice to see that we're putting the money behind the work that we're doing on that, so that we don't end up in a K-8 debacle like we had before. The supports for students that we're putting in place, and then, of course, all the supports that we have under our racial educational equity policy, which is a policy that drives so much of what we do. The one place that I am concerned is also something you mentioned, Carol, and that is our reserves. I'm so disappointed that we are still below the board policy minimum of 3%, and I know that we should be at at least 5. Any person who runs a budget knows that in good times, and these aren't even good times for us, but they're better than they were, and when you have those good times, you have to put some of that money aside, because we know what it was like when we were cutting 40 million, and how, the fact that we had some reserves there saved us a little bit, but not a lot. So, I'm, that's the one place where I would like, would have liked to have seen us be more fiscally responsible as a board in adding to our reserves. But otherwise, I am supporting the budget. And I also want to say thank you to staff, because I got everything I ever asked for in a timely way.
I'm going to add one more thanks to staff, too. Like, I will just say, the volume of, like, people may feel like you didn't get what you needed. Staff has been generating more in terms of information to really try and satisfy board needs than, it was a lot. So I'm just going to say, I just feel great appreciation for people having made it a priority and providing what we.
Yeah, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I am so appreciative of all of the work that went into the tremendous volume of information that was given to us. So, thank you, everyone.
Go ahead. All right. So, I would also reiterate the thanks to staff and superintendent. And I guess where my head is on, on this budget is, is that, A, it's a learning process, B, it's, it's, it's a process. So it's, it's not, it doesn't end tonight, this morning. It really just begins. And so, some of the reforms that you're talking about, Paul, that I also agree with, and Steve, as well as, as fundamentally looking how we're actually delivering services to the schools, is a, is a key point, that we, because of our involvement in the budget process this year, will be more equipped at dealing with these issues going forward. And, and that will serve us well. So, not to say that we can't do things that we certainly can, but I think this, this budget is a step forward. It's, since, since I've been on this board, it's been, this group here has been more, has delved deeper into the budget than, than, than any other board that I've been on. So, understand the frustration, and think that we, that it provides us a good framework for going forward. So, with that, call the question. Resolution 5274 is approved. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, indicate by saying no.
No.
No. The resolution passes by a vote of five to two with student representative.
Yes.
Voting yes. Okay, great. Now, we'll adjourn the board as a budget committee and call the board back into regular session. The board will now consider remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on resolutions 5274, 5275.
Pull out the legal, the legal thing for Miller-Nash.
Okay, and those numbers would be? Does anybody have their?
Do you know what the numbers are?
Jolly, do you have the resolution numbers?
It's in resolution, I got 5273.
5273? Thanks, Katie. Somebody's on top of things.
There we go. Well.
You got it?
Yeah. We're going to, Steve, I think the way to do this is to just pull out the whole resolution that you can talk about, and the two items on.
The motion I'm going to make concerning them doesn't have anything to do with the other resolutions, so it really needs to be. The motion I'm making only directly has to do with those details.
That's fine, but you can do that once, once we, we'll talk, okay, you can do it. We'll do it that way. All right, so, the board will now vote on the business agenda minus resolution 5273. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Business agenda minus resolution 5273 passes with seven to zero. Student representative.
Aye.
Voting aye. Okay. Steve, now you can talk about your amendment.
I want to pull out those two things and table them. Move to table them. Move to table both Miller-Nash sections of the resolution.
Is there a second?
To next meeting.
Second.
Till next week?
Till next meeting. The next meeting we meet. It would bring it back up, the next meeting we meet. Okay? And speak to it very briefly.
Sure.
I think we need to have a discussion surrounding it. I think there's a, people, there's concern surrounding it, so it should take a discussion. It doesn't mean that we're not doing it, and, but we should have a discussion surrounding our, how we're doing our legal work.
Any other? Jolly, do you have, is there any, you want to say anything on that?
Just do it now? Yeah. Well, we, we have to vote. I'm happy to have a discussion at any point about our legal work. So, I, we need to vote on the amendment, I think, soon, but, but if, I'd be happy to have a conversation now. I've tried to respond to some of the questions that board members have raised in the last several days, but if, if the board wants to postpone until the June meeting, the first June meeting, I think that would be June 14. June 14. Or I'm happy to, but I'm also very happy to answer questions now, so that we can move forward with it.
Okay, let's vote on the, on the table. All those in favor of tabling?
What's on, what's the motion? Table this till next week?
Table till the next meeting.
Do we have discussion?
Table to a time, sir.
Why, why, why do you want to, why can't we just go now, Steve?
What?
Whatever discussion you want to have.
Well, oh, I think we need to look into it, and I think we need to have a presentation on it. I think we need to discuss it as a board, and it's pretty late in the evening right now. That's all. It's only a week. They'll, they'll live.
So, that's the motion?
I don't think it's going to pass anyhow. Pam, I think it's going to be voted out.
Yeah, that is the motion. So, all those in favor of tabling the Miller-Nash contracts?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are three.
All those opposed? No?
No.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so, now, we need a motion to pass resolution 5273.
So moved.
Second?
No, we didn't. We pulled it out. So, it's been moved by Anthony, seconded by Buell. All those in favor?
So, just a, not just a process, because, so are we voting now on the Miller-Nash stuff, or everything else?
We just voted on everything else. Now we're voting on the piece that was pulled.
Specifically resolution, which also.
So Chair Kurler, it's, the number is now 5278, because it's been pulled out.
Okay. 5278. Right, thank you. So, includes all these contracts, including the Miller-Nash.
No, you've already voted on this one. You voted on everything.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
Just whether to table it or not, Pam.
All those in favor of resolution 5278, say aye.
But can we have discussion?
Oh, absolutely discussion.
So, my questions are about the Miller-Nash contract or contracts. You, in, in the email where you responded to perceived questions, you suggested, I wasn't clear on your suggestion about the exemption for a contract for legal services to be considered as a no-bid. So, let me think of a better way to say that. What I want to understand better is, I took from information you had in that email that the contracting policy delineates specifically a contract like this for legal services as not needing to go through a no-bid justification.
So, the procurement, the, the district's public contracting rules, which the board passed two months ago in March, provides that legal services are exempt from the competitive bidding process. And so, the language specifically is, it's number 460525, selection by negotiation. The superintendent may procure personnel services with contractors through direct negotiation in any of the following circumstances. There's a couple provisions, and then, this is the one that applies here. The nature of the work is not project-driven, but requires an ongoing, long-term relationship of knowledge and trust. Examples of such work include legal services. So, the board's procurement rules that you passed two months ago explicitly exempt legal services from the competitive bidding process.
And so, that's the part that I wanted to clarify. It says the superintendent may procure, the superintendent reports to the board, so the superintendent can recommend to the board that we go through a no-bid process, but it's the board's decision whether or not we go through a bid process.
I don't, I don't, I don't read it that way. I think that there's a, there's also different provisions where you do, we do need to come to the board for that permission.
Okay.
But if it says the superintendent may procure, I think that that's indicating that the superintendent may do that.
So, thank you. So that's your legal opinion of what the contracting rules say?
Of what our, yeah, and I don't think we have.
How about Pam?
Use of family.
And so, Tom, I'm officially requesting that we get the advice of outside counsel, clearly not Miller-Nash, to tell us what the legal requirements are. I don't think, based on discussions I've had with other attorneys, that it says anything except that Carol can, may recommend to do this. I don't think.
Well, but here's the deal, Mike. If we want to contract it out, the board can do that. So, I mean, that's, that's chasing, that's, I don't want to spend any time on that question, personally.
So, you're, so you're saying that you won't allow, you won't allow outside counsel procured by the board to assess whether this legal advice is correct?
No, it's not allow, which is, I personally, I, it's a simple question. We, you know, we can, it's irrelevant to me.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't agree with Jolly.
So, then, let's, let's all vote and say.
We already have a motion on it.
No, in other words, it's okay to, this disagreement with Jolly is irrelevant, because the board has the authority to, to say, we want this thing contracted out. And the board has the authority to.
No, but I, yeah, I get that. I'm not, I'm not challenging that.
Yeah.
I'm challenging Jolly's conclusion that the contracting rules from the manual that we passed don't give us the authority.
All right, so let's send it to, let's send that issue to the.
Pretty straightforward.
Business and Operations Committee?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to, I just want to clarify that we just agreed that the Business and Operations Committee can research whether Jolly's interpretation of the contracting rules is correct.
So, I want to, I want to respond to Director Constam's request that I read the language again, and then I want to clarify one way that you restated my words. So, the language says, the superintendent may procure personal services with contractors through direct negotiations in any of the following circumstances. This is on page 35 and goes on to the page 35, 36 of the manual. I did not say that it prohibits the board from procuring or from changing the rules.
Meaning, it doesn't prohibit the board from going through a competitive process to procure the services.
Correct. It clearly establishes the authority of the superintendent to contract directly. However, it doesn't prohibit the board from choosing a different path.
So, for instance, the first, the first circumstance in which the superintendent may do that is that the contract price is not more than $50,000. So, for instance, we often procure without going through the competitive bidding process for services that are under $50,000. We don't need to come to the board in each of those contracts and request the right to not go through that process. So, the legal services are, are within those, those circumstances, are similar to those exemptions.
So, the superintendent can recommend to the board that we hire, you know, procure Miller-Nash or any other law firm without going through a formal bidding process.
That's, that's exactly.
And the board can decide whether they want to approve that recommendation.
And the.
That's what we're doing right now.
So, because then the contract is over a certain amount, then the board has to approve it. So the board can determine whether you want to approve this specific contract or not.
Great. I just didn't think that was the way you answered the question in the email.
I'm glad I had the opportunity to clarify that.
I really appreciate that, too. Thanks. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, wait, I had one more question. So, Jolly, the services that we're procuring with a no-bid contract for $1.2 million to the law firm that we've been using for decades, decades is inaccurate.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, it's a long time ago. So, are there other ways to provide the legal services that this district needs, aside from, you know, spending a million to on Miller-Nash?
So, I really appreciate that question. So, a couple of things I just want to clarify is that while Miller-Nash does provide the bulk of our legal services, and it's fairly typical for organizations to have a main firm that they work with, we do work with a number of other law firms, we, for our workers' compensation, special education, so where it's appropriate, we do, you know, farm out that work to other places, and that information was provided to during the budget process. In terms of, is there a more cost-effective way to do that? So, your suggestion earlier of, could we just hire more, a few more in-house counsel and save those funds? I appreciate the question. Performing your own litigation work is highly labor and personnel-intensive. So I just, for instance, the city does most of their own litigation, and I just pulled up their website, and they have 38 attorneys. So, and as you pointed out, you know, we're, in some ways, a comparably sized governmental agency. And so, so, we couldn't just hire three more attorneys and, and, and reduce our costs that substantially. Further, over time. Further, over time, that's not really cost-effective, because there are times when we don't need the amount of legal services that we are currently using. Things, it goes up and down and so that would be an excessive in-house counsel.
So, the comparison is that since we have an equivalent general fund budget to the city and the city has 38 attorneys that litigate, we'd need something like 38 attorneys?
I don't think we would need 38 attorneys to litigate. I'm just saying that it's, it's more than just hiring three attorneys to do the litigation, so.
So, Oliver, can you tell us, like, over the past five years, how much we've spent? I mean, has it consistently been 1.2 million dollars on Miller-Nash?
No, this is, this, this has been a year where we've had more substantial litigation. In past years, it's been, I, you know, I'd say anywhere between probably 600 and a million dollars with, you know, with Miller-Nash. And the other thing I would just like to take the opportunity to say is that Miller-Nash provides excellent, excellent legal services for the district and has for a long time. One of the things that's in your, in these rules is where there's a, a ongoing, long-term relationship of knowledge and trust. And they are a, they provide the, I mean, I believe the best education law services in the state. They're known nationwide. They're, they understand our operations and our people and our strategies. They have a very strong equity lens, both when they are providing services to us and in their own, you know, firm, and they are seen as bar leaders and that. And so, I just, I want to take the opportunity to really appreciate, appreciate the nature of the relationship with them.
But they're not the only law firm in the city that could provide the same services. And they're not the only nationally-known law firm in the city?
No, although there's no other firm in Portland or in, really in the metro area that provides education law services in the way that they do. There's firms in, a firm in Salem, there's a firm in Oregon City, but there's no firm that has it anywhere near a comparable education law department.
So, then my last question is, how does the minority women-owned emerging small businesses' goal that the district have apply to, to this particular service we're procuring?
So, we would, you know, I'd be happy to go back and look at that. I don't, we, we'd have to go, probably go back and look at that.
But isn't that, isn't that?
Interesting question as to what defines ownership of that.
Right, ownership, right.
Isn't that part of the, the equity lens? I mean, aren't all our contracts?
Absolutely, right, right.
Don't they all go through that lens?
And so, one of the things, for instance, Miller-Nash, I think it was either their partnership class last year or the year before promoted seven women into partnership. Their entire partnership class was women. And so, there's other ways in which amongst the bar, they are, they are very strong in terms of their attorneys of color and women. One of the efforts that I'm personally involved with is looking at how we do diversify the bar. Oregon has a very white bar and there's a lot of creative efforts about, in, in Oregon. And so, creative efforts in how to do that, and there are many ways in which Miller-Nash is a very strong bar leader in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other? All right, all those in favor, thank, thank you, Jolly.
Thank you.
Yeah. All those in favor of resolution 5278, 5275, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Passes 6-1 with student rep.
Aye.
David's voting aye. And this meeting is adjourned.